We're ready to go.
Good, thanks.
No, there's no doubt. I guess I'll just take mine, it's fine.
Will you be okay?
Yep.
All right. Well, good afternoon. I love you. It's good to see you all and good to see the media P. Voight for the Temple Star and Paulie McCarthy for Channel 32. Thank you so much for being there. And we will open the meeting by asking Councillor Richard Bantry, now officially the deputy mayor, to give us a word of prayer.
I'd prefer not to stand there.
That's all right. Appreciate that.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee as council, administration, and members of the community in this council meeting. We ask that a blessing be with us, that the decisions we make will be for the benefit of our community and it will be profitable to everybody that we serve. We ask to be guided and directed in the manner appropriate as we sit as council members and mayor. These things we ask for humbly in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. And happy to see you back, Councillor Bantry. We still have one councillor under the weather, Councillor Barfus, and we wish him well in the future. We have an addition to the agenda under number three, item three. This is the request from the committee theater. You have a letter to help you understand what it is, so we will put it on the, let's see, seven?
CIP.
Seventy. So that is about it. Under ten, I will talk briefly about the CAF review. And the second paper that you have is there to support 7A2. All right? So that's what it is for. All right. With those additions, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Creed will approve the agenda. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. The agenda is adopted. No delegation today. We have some minutes of the town council meeting of February 24th, 2015 that need to be adopted. Councillor Barnes?
I move to adopt the minutes as read here.
Of the town council meeting?
Of the town council meeting, February 24th, 2015.
Thank you. Any question regarding those minutes? Sing non? All in favor? Thank you.
I can't vote because I wasn't here. I see that.
So, okay, thank you, councillor. Okay, under six, business arising, as you can see in your packet, there is a bylaw 1632. Cat bylaw, we had a good discussion last time at our committee of the whole. There, what we need is a motion for first reading. And then if there's still some more tweaking that needs to happen, it's still is time to make a few review. Yes, councillor?
I'll make motion to for first reading of bylaw 1632, known as a cat bylaw.
Thank you. Questions regarding that? A couple more tweaking of language. There's two paragraphs that could receive a little bit more clarity by doing just a couple of words, if and a then, and a then, and another one. And I think we've done not too bad with that. Councillor Creed?
I still have just a couple of concerns as I went through it. I mean, I could probably find more, but two that stood out to me, one in the definitions of owner. It still bothers me that he says under this bylaw that a cat could have more than one owner because I don't know how that was going to play out. If he means he can take it more than one person if there's a cat problem or... It just bothered me that it says under the purposes of this bylaw, there can be more than one owner, right? That's... I'm just not comfortable with that.
All right.
There's one other.
Administration could note that concern. And maybe we could try to see if it is something that can be maybe explained a little bit better. It took me a few readings to be able to understand that, but I think I get the concept. The concept is actually if you, you can be called the owner if you are in charge of the looking after the cat. So in other words, you act as the owner. It's like a parent that has a child that is not his child but has a care of that child. You could say that it should act as a parent. So maybe if the wording needs to be fixed, we could be looking at that.
I think the concern is whether that's going to create a double jeopardy for, you know, if there's an infraction and what that means, you know? I can understand that, you know, somebody could be taking care of an animal that's not necessarily their own and they could be considered the owner or at least...
Which, act as such?
Acting as, but I wouldn't think that at that point, the cat would still have... You know, the person that would be taking care of it would be the owner and still not the, you know...
You could call it a surrogate, surrogate owner.
But I couldn't see, you know, the idea of necessarily finding the person taking care of the cat plus the owner, you know? Anyway, that's what bothered me.
Okay, so you want a little bit of clarity with the definition? Councillor Bantry?
Under impounding, number seventeen, let me see. No, it isn't. What in the devil did I read that? It's under impounding. And it has to do with the Animal Control Officer. There it is, number eighteen. The Animal Control Officer is authorized to enter any privately owned premise other than a dwelling. Now, I think that we have to be careful there because if you have a fenced yard and that fenced yard is an enclosed fence with a locked gate on it, you know, or a lockable type gate, I think that's trespassing.
Or a warehouse.
Yeah.
Warehouse is not a dwelling, but it is someone's private property.
Yeah, so I think we need to look at the wording on that one, too.
So that is something for administration to make a note of? And Councillor Barnes?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the owner thing. I was, I was a little concerned about that one, too, because, you know, perhaps somebody's gone away on a holiday for a couple of weeks and their neighbor, you know, they asked the neighbor to look after the cat and then the bylaw guy comes around and sees that cat doesn't have a license and he goes after the person who's got the cat there. And it's not up to them, you know, to provide that. It's the owner.
Yeah, that's right.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't begin to consider the neighbor who's looking after the cat as an owner or even consider acting as the owner. They're just looking after, they're babysitting.
I think, I think all those are points well taken and maybe we, we need to kind of review that.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Are you asking that maybe we protect like an agent or a steward, someone that's been delegated, so we put up some protections so that they're not on the hook for...
Exactly.
Okay, so there's all those legal...
The owner is the owner.
In fact, what you're talking about is legal ramification in the face of this bylaw. Jeff?
One thing I'll point out for council's consideration, we hear a lot, especially with dogs, is, "Oh, it's not mine. I'm just watching it for...". We hear it all the time. Lloyd chases a dog back to the property, your dog goes, "Oh, it's not my dog", just watching it for someone. "I've been watching it for them for 10 years."
Well, that's a different story, right? They could be considered the owner that that would...
But by definition, that's, that's one thing I know he's trying to tie up a bit.
I just don't want to see a double jeopardy.
I hear what you're saying for sure, yeah.
And so I think all those are good points.
Yeah.
I did have one other item I wanted to address, and this is something that I felt was missing from the, from the bylaw. In the dog bylaw, there is, there's a requirement if the dog, if there's a female dog in heat that's unspayed, that they should be kept confined. And I think that should also apply to cats because they are, they really attract, they really attract the toms, you know, if they're available. And so I think that should be added to the bylaw, that, you know, a female, an unspayed female in heat should be confined.
Okay, that's a good one. Okay, so we have a motion for first reading, which we can pass. And then adjustment can be done before we have second reading. And then we can move forward with this item. Thank you so much for all your, your input. Yes?
One thing, sorry, let me tell you here. I have in the background, but I'd like some clarification from council. This is not a type of bylaw that requires a statutory public hearing. However, given the large number of residents that have cats and have pets, councillor, at your discretion, could hold one if you want to make sure that if there's anyone that has some concerns, they can be heard before we pass another reading. So I just want to have some discussion on that tonight if council would give some corrections as to whether you want to hold a non-statutory public hearing.
Okay, we've done this very thing for the dog bylaw just in order for safe measure. And what is your feeling at this point? We much better with this bylaw, with the dog bylaw, I think we have been much more careful in crafting that one. So do you want to see a public hearing in between? If it is going to bring a new aspect, I don't want it to be a session just for complaints. There have to be legitimate reason against this bylaw, right? But the public can complain if they so wish.
I was gonna say, you can't tell them not to complain. That's a prerogative.
No, absolutely. But I think since we're working on a bylaw, what we need is, is input to improve the bylaw rather than a complaint where that's not going to help us improve. So if there is complaint, the same with the dog. We had also some ideas to how to move the bylaw and do a better bylaw, which happened. So that is a type of input I think we would appreciate from, from the public.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we, if we word it in a way where instead of, hey, council is looking for your input on this bylaw, the council is proposing, versus council is considering this draft of a bylaw and we would, you know, we're welcoming any feedback or suggestions or opinions so that it doesn't look like, you know, this is the bylaw, tear it apart. It just says, this is the draft. If you have anything specific you'd like to see added, subtracted, or, you know, adjusted.
Or discussed.
Sure.
Because it doesn't mean that it always happens that we withdraw things.
Right.
And if they want to speak to council, they can go to Jeff and have him put on as a delegation. He could come to council.
Definitely, we did, ended up doing the dog bylaw. Didn't actually do a public hearing. We had delegations come in.
And I think that was the fastest and the best.
Yeah. Okay, so the consensus would be that you would appreciate to have a non-statutory kind of public, public input on it?
Get word out, throw the draft up there.
Just to be clear, we have a couple of options. We can have a public hearing where anyone can just show up and speak, or we can request delegations.
That's what we...
Right? So they would prepare something beforehand. It would be written. You would have it in your package. We could invite them to come speak to it. In this case, that, that could be effective. We saw that very well with Mr. Walsh and it gave us a chance to amend the bylaw a whole bunch before he came. So we could look at, it wouldn't be a public hearing. We would simply invite delegations on the topic, but they'd have to prepare something beforehand.
Okay. I like this idea.
I like that, yeah.
Okay. Are we okay with that? Okay, so let's vote on the first reading of this bylaw. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, Alberta Southwest Regional Alliance, Councillor P. Voight provided us with a little bit of information, which is kind of similar to what the presentation was when it was made at council. US Council can signify or talk, discuss the notion of rejoining this alliance maybe more from a good neighbor kind of point of view rather than a true benefit because a lot of it, as you can see, we already done things on our own. So there is something, there are some studies on the broadband, there's some studies on certain way, community, there are a lot of good things that Southwest has done, there is no doubt. But a lot of event we done ourselves, like the Wi-Fi, we done all that stuff also. The tourism initiative, we done that ourselves with the Mormon Trail.
But at the same token, Mayor, when we look at the, when we look at the direct return, $21,000 as verse to the cost of 3,500 dollars, are we, are we throwing our money away and not using the advantage of Southwest?
Well, it is true of any reader, councillor. It's really true of that. If we were willing to see the grander and greater vision of regional alliance, which is the same story with South Grove. The return does not always come directly to the town but is being part of something grander than ourselves that has some benefit. That is true. There is benefit in being part of a larger picture. The thing that is not mentioned there and that if we move along to rejoin, we can't do it until they invite us to begin with, so we cannot pass them a motion. But there is one thing that I want you to remember. A lot of the extra costs that will be associated with it will be per diem and will be travel. So that, we have kind of looked at it a little bit, which we factor in that to be about in a $3,000, $3,500 for the councillor they will go, which...
In the four years?
No, in one year.
In one year?
Every year, every year. So that is not factored in this, so when you start to take the, the cost of that, you can see the benefits lessen. But still, what we will need to do is readjust the budget this year. If that's what we want to do, the budget will need to be readjusted.
Now, is that with, with ride sharing with the county council? Those...
We counted essentially the per diem, which is what is going to take the most because those meetings are fairly long, so you, I'm not so sure where, but they are. And then you have traveling, which is about at least an hour on both side. And so you're talking six hours. Four houses have cut off for half a day. Beyond and above is one whole day. So that, those are costs we cannot ignore. For example, for myself, when in South Grove, if I go to a meeting because it's my committee, I do not charge any per diem ever, even if I go to summits that last a whole day, only charge for the traveling. That's all what I can charge per policy. And I'm fine with that. But this is not the same story. So...
But again, Mayor, are we, are we, this sounds funny and I don't know how I'm gonna put it, but I'm gonna put it right in front. Are we cheating ourselves for future council?
Now, what...
Because is future council gonna be involved? And then they're gonna have to, have to do the financials according to their wants and needs?
It's right on the policy we have. The policy we have, if we don't like it, we can change it in time to come. But it's a policy, so I'm just going with policy. This is not within policy, so that has to be fixed through the budget that we will review in time. Okay? So if we're okay with that, if we understand that, it's fine, but we need to understand it. Okay? All right, so councillor P. Voight?
So just by way of report, and not reflected here, was that the Alberta Southwest Board officially voted and invited us in.
Okay, so we waited.
I was to come back and let you know that that has happened. And now they're just waiting on our reply to their invitation.
You went to the meeting?
Yes.
We didn't receive the written reply yet.
Understood, but I was authorized to come and tell you. And I was present for the vote, which was unanimous.
Thank you, so I'm really glad to, to hear that.
In addition, the general feeling around the table was that they seemed a little bitter that we hadn't participated the last couple of years because prior to that, we were fairly active and a lot, we were involved in a lot of these initiatives. And then, you know, we pulled out kind of before many of them even got completed. So they're happy to see that we're considering coming back on board, you know, again to see the completion of these projects and then the beginning of others. So when they talked about budget, they talked about, you know, their RITA had a budget of $435,000 for the region. And with, you know, with our participation, it's possible that their budget might be increased because it's dependent on how many members they have. So again, this number, 435, is based on their last year number. They're confident with our, you know, our town among their ranks, they would probably get a little more than that for their grants. Of course, they're never sure, right? So, and then councillor Curl was really excited to see, you know, someone else from this corner of the region that had, you know, kind of a level of excitement for what they were doing. And potentially, we could redirect more of that 435 in this direction if we were actively engaged, if we were involved in, you know, decision making and policy for the RITA.
And councillor, I appreciate you saying that if we are involved. And that is where we failed last time. And that is where we must not fail this time.
I was gonna say, Mayor, that if, if this council decides to go with, with Southwest and the councillor who's designated to represent this council, it needs to be a 100% designation.
Yeah.
And I'm not wondering, because of the involvement of this, maybe we could lighten that councillor's load so that, you know, more attention is paid to Southwest. I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, we, we might have to look at the organization one more time because we're not quite done with the committee. If you have read the report from Mr. CAF, you would see there is other committees that are, that have been...
Moving?
Yes. And so I think we need to maybe take a clear look and we might have to redo an organizational review for ourselves as to how we conduct business. So I appreciate you saying that. Thanks.
So just in my final remarks, I agree, and that's why I put in there, you know, bold red, the $3,580 is just the, the cost per, you know, person in the community. And then the big plus sign related to additional costs for travel, et cetera. By the way, some of those things, like for instance, the annual AGM that they host is open to all council, every councillor here.
Yeah, right.
So everybody could decide if they want to be a part of that. Or certainly on the, you know, on the months that we host it. In fact, every host community always invites the entire mayor and council of that community to come each time to that regional conversation and be a part of that. We had a lovely report from Christmas Pass and, you know, their whole council was there excited to have us in their town.
Yeah, and this is something that there again, part of the way we do business with our committee. We will have to review because an invitation is a wonderful thing. They pay for their registration, et cetera, but they don't pay for per diem, neither do they pay for the travel. And so we have to see how many eggs we put in the same basket and make sure that there is enough money to go to the big conferences where we really receive tremendous amount of knowledge regarding the way we do business as councillors as a whole. So that's something we will have to look at it. And I think that was a recommendation from Mr. CAF also, to take a good look and see what is reasonable for us.
I was just gonna say, just a little note here. Like by carpooling with councillor Curl that would save us some money, I don't think it's fair to throw the burden on councillor Curl to be the sole driver all the time. If we're going to be involved...
Actually, he is the driver of his county vehicle. So I drive a car.
It all depends.
He may not be able to go sometimes.
He said, right, his county will pick up the tab.
Okay, he is the chair, so he should be there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'm sure we can organize that. Thank you so much. I'm kind of excited in some ways and I never want to be disappointed, as I said before.
How are we moving forward with this?
We're going to wait for the invitation, the form of invitation. And then once we have it, we will have...
Is that absolutely necessary?
I, I don't know. It seems to me it is.
What I can do is talk to Bill tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm not sure they were planning to send one after what they directed me to do.
If she emailed me and said I should expect one.
Okay.
And then what I can do is draft the letter to Alberta Southwest and bring it to council for approval.
Okay, so what do you want, a motion to approve in principle the, the letter to rejoin?
It's fine. If I have direction from council, I'll talk to Bill, I'll draft the letter, I'll bring it back to the 24th for approval.
Okay.
That's fine.
Mayor, have we got the total cost involved?
The total cost will be a dollar per capita as per the LSS.
As our membership.
Per year.
Plus, plus our per diem.
Plus our per diem and travel.
So it's almost $7,000.
Yeah.
That's a quick rough number, but yeah.
Yeah, that's why I say it almost.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if that's what you...
It's significant cost, but...
It's a cost.
Yeah, and like, like we were talking, Lloyd, excuse me, councillor Curl and I were talking there about Alberta Southwest really kind of also pushing and marketing the Mormon Trail. Right now, they're fighting with Alberta Travel to get the Southwest corner or region marketed better. And they were asking, you know, hey, what, other than, you know, what we already know, are there any other things coming out of the pipe that we should include in our petition? And of course, councillor Curl and myself, we immediately said, Mormon Trail. I mean, if you guys push that from the Southwest side, we already know it's a big part of this kind of Southeast corner. And if it's marketed really well on both fronts, you know, we all know Cartston's kind of the main hub there of that Mormon Trail.
Yeah, there is also, councillor Bantry, I'm going to give you a chance. There is also the working between Alberta South Grove and Alberta Southwest. They're starting to take shape regarding the broadband initiative and the way we are approaching the mayor, the Minister of Infrastructure and of municipalities to start to really take a good look at this. We had an initiative, a first economic summit with South Grove. And there were people from the Lesbridge Economic Development RITA, which is from the town of Lesbridge, and other stakeholders of different community and businesses. And all of them noted that unless we start to have the broadband issue resolved, rural Alberta is not going to fare as well as it could. So this is something...
If I could, Mayor, just to speak to that, they spent, they spent about a half hour on the broadband initiative. Specifically, and each, each community is, you know, taking a position, an independent position on this. But collectively, as a region, where the trend is headed is that we can, as rural Albertans, we can no longer, you know, expect the service providers, whether it be the cable companies, tell us, they're just, they're not interested at all in bringing broadband this way. So most, I can tell you, as far as Alberta Southwest, the position of all of them unanimously is, they're turning it into a municipal utility. And broadband will be basically provided by the public sector in this region of Alberta. That's the direction they're going. And they were, they were pretty confident that Cartston was the only town in the region that wasn't on board with that initiative. And...
Well, I don't know that the town is not on board. I think the town is cautious because the extreme, extremely high cost.
True.
And it's extremely high cost to the consumer. And it is, if you turn it into utilities, then it begs the question, can a lone person, widower, who use very little of the internet, is it right for that person to have to subsidize something that young family will be using more readily or that mature people will be using more readily than a widower?
Well, they weren't, they weren't really talking...
That is maybe not, not as able... That is maybe not, not as able or interested
Right.
to use the services that you can have, like downloading movies, downloading tons of music and all that, which might not be what they're interested in, but what they will have to pay for.
Yeah, they actually said that right now, all of our residential needs are being perfectly met. They're talking specifically to commercial needs. We just don't have it. Rural internet needs for, for business are not being met.
And, and you're right, there are businesses in Tabor that have said to the town, if you cannot provide quicker internet upload, we are here. And in fact, there are two very large corporations that might not come into this region because of that issue, which is sad.
Yeah, I was, I just wanted a little more clarification to me, what the advantage of broadband is over, say, a Shaw or, or...
That is broadband.
It is, it is a...
That we already have.
Yeah, it's a different way to provide a system.
Why is it that, that the businesses can't get the same service that we as individuals get? Is it, is it the amount of information, data that they need to use?
Yeah, so there's, there's different levels of, of that broadband, right? So you've got a different speed for downloading as opposed to uploading.
Right.
Uploading something that bigger commercial businesses would be doing a lot more of than what you or I would be.
Right.
When I'm uploading pictures to my, my picture website, it takes all night for that to upload. A business isn't gonna be able to do that. And that's, that's just not something that you're willing to do. So that upload speed isn't available.
It's critical.
Yeah.
And that, that's what's not available. The download speeds actually are pretty good.
Yeah.
Councillor, if I may?
If I may, I'd like to address my questions to our administrator, our interim CEO. Jeff, you've been actively involved in Mormon Trail. You've been actively involved in Badlands and stuff like that. Do you feel that being a member of Southwest will help us?
You're putting me in the exact same position you did a couple of meetings ago.
That's right.
So I'm trying to remember exactly how I entered, so I'm consistent. I think, like I said before, if we participate, we've never questioned the merits of the programming and the activities that Alberta Southwest has done. They do good things. It was at the time, we weren't represented well at the board level and council, and so we weren't very involved. And you also have this big political piece hanging out there too, which I'm not prepared to comment on. You have, you have a large political discussion to have too.
Right.
So that's what it really comes down to. I have no question that Alberta Southwest is doing good things for communities in southern Alberta. But I'm always cautious about the law of diminishing returns. The more things we belong to, the less we get out of any.
Sure.
But will it help us in our tourism?
I guess it's hard to say because they, they, how Rita's are set up now and how their funding is set up is you're really doing project-based things. So I don't know what's around the corner for Alberta Southwest. And frankly, neither's Alberta Southwest. But they're gonna have to put a program together and apply for grants and look for funding for these project-based scenarios. Their whole method of operation, for all the reasons, has changed because you have to grant right to fund specific projects. So I have to assume, I think, I think Bev and Bob and the people there have a good finger on the pulse of the area. And I think they're gonna have good programming. I have no reason to doubt that.
But we know that is for next year, the, the funding from the government will still exist. What we do not know is what will happen moving forward. And moving forward is unknown for all the Rita. It's not only Alberta Southwest, it's South Grove, it's everybody else. All what we know is that the ministers are very much in favor of Rita's and feel that they fulfill an important need because we're closer to the communities than they are. So we more voice and more an ear to what is needed in this region. And maybe better suited to advocate for the needs of this region. They recognize that. They recognize the, the impact it has had in the past with all the studies that have been done, particularly with South Grove, which have created a lot of good further programming from the government. But where we moving in the future is your guess, their guess, as good as our collective guess. We don't know.
I, I wanna know, is this a duplication of service or is there something more distinct with the two of them that we need both?
Between South Grove and Southwest?
Yes, between the South Grove and Southwest. Is there a duplication of services? Because if there is, I, I'm not convinced that we need to spend that money to get the same thing. But if, if it's definite advantage, I guess that's the question you were asking councillor. If it's an advantage, then we need to seriously look at it.
Well, I'm wondering about their logging situation for MSI grants and everything else.
No.
No, I think that's a maze position, right?
Yeah, that's not where it happened. To give you a little bit maybe of a different take, Alberta South Grove has other communities around Lethbridge. And Alberta Southwest has more the community going right up to the...
EC.
To the border. So the two encompass pretty well the whole of southern Alberta, except for the town of Lethbridge. Alberta Southwest has always taken a different approach than Alberta, um, South Grove. Alberta Southwest was created on tourism. That was a very initial base of that alliance, of which Marion was a founder. Former CEO was part of that board when that board was created, that Rita was created. So today, the government no longer will provide money to Rita's who are strictly based or defined through tourism. So when you talk about duplication, I understand exactly what you're saying. Alberta Southwest is now pushed over the years to start to embrace the more economic development, a pure economic development that South Grove was doing. So is there going to be a possibility of duplication? Yeah, I guess in time it could be. But then that will beg the question, is there a point where the two Rita need to join?
That was kind of where I'm coming from.
We're not there yet.
Yeah. Now, the, the other question I, I have, I understand now, or clearly, the need for the broadband for, for the businesses, right? How is South Grove working on that end of things? Are they involved at all on that? Or is that just the Southwest initiative?
Okay, South Grove always had that on the Rita. But South Grove needed to know if their communities were joining the bandwagon or not. And it appears that they are. So we have a little different take on it. But we jointly are working together on that and will carry on working together because we can see that there is strength in numbers.
So you're saying that South Grove and Southwest are kind of joining forces on that issue?
Yeah, so we're working on different kind of aspect of the program. But essentially, we made a presentation, Alberta South Grove made a presentation to the ministers in Edmonton. And we invited Alberta Southwest to come and present their position also. So that they could see that it's not only a portion of the region that is interested, but there is a wider implication in that. And Lethbridge, in fact, is quite interested in a project for different reasons. It's because their service is not equal everywhere in the city. So they also realize that they have weaknesses, have gaps in their, in their system, although they're, they're quite good. Anyway, that's, we should move on.
Mayor, I'll leave one more comment. When I was on council in two thousand seven, two thousand ten, I was asked to represent council on South Grove. Marion and myself were at quite a few meetings. Also, the county was there. And we collectively, as, as participants from the Cartstonland area, felt like South Grove based a lot of their projects, Lethbridge, Southeast. You know, a lot of things went to Lethbridge and Southeast Lethbridge, to the Tabor area and things like that. And that's, it sort of bothered us.
Well, you know, Lethbridge is at this point not in access, you know. Neither is the county of Lethbridge. Okay? All right, and you have to realize, we, South Grove charged thirty-five cents per head. We have done so for years. And we have a funding model that's very sustainable for quite a while yet. And at that price, when the, when the government change a funding model, we did not change or per capita when all other Rita changed that.
Well, I think you've got population to the...
No, not really.
No.
My father always made a statement, you pay for what you get.
No, what, what we, what we had, we had very, very creative way to attract money. Okay, all right, let's move on.
Well, you know, I think, do we have a target? I know we, we keep talking about revisiting our committees and regional associations and things. Are we planning a date when we wanna relook at that?
Councillor, it's a very good point. And I can think that the first thing we need to do is, number one, bring the George Cuff report forward, discuss that. And then as part of that report, take time to really reassess all that. Would that be fair?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So exactly when in time, I would hope that administration would maybe guide us a little bit there because they have quite a better work to do with this report. Maybe at the next meeting in two weeks' time, we could start to kind of broadly look at the need to revisit the policies that we have. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's suggesting that we pull out of South Grove in favor of Alberta Southwest. I think we're just looking at, if we're getting benefit for our money in one, can we also get benefit for our money in another?
And you, you will start to realize, just as a final note, that when you, when you're part of an alliance, you don't always get the true return at your door right today. But if you're part of the whole, it's looking at the whole as being good for the whole, rather than just you.
What's in it for me?
Because every community in your Rita will not benefit equally from what is being done in the region. And that is a fact, okay? But all do good. All right, request for decision. Seven, recommendation from CCW and need a motion to approve policy D thirty, which was disposal of assets, inventory and other items as was presented by Jeff. Jeff, do you want to talk to that or we just need to have a motion? We, we looked at it at CCW so somebody could make a motion. The purpose of this policy was to be able to dispose of, um, material that were left after a job was finished, all stuff that is in a shop that needs to be disposed of, where we could make a little bit of money with scrap metal or whatever.
And this came out of Cuff review also, did it?
You know, you know something, councillor Ben, very funny that you say that. In fact, no. Jeff had, had that policy on the table when Mr. Cuff said we should have that policy. And he brandished his, his paper. I was there and I say, go to it.
And he was ahead of the game.
So he had foreseen the need and that was good.
But by the same token, Mr. Cuff recognized the need for this policy.
Uh, he approves of it.
Yes.
So I was the one who made the recommendation in CCW. I will now formally make a motion that we approve policy D thirty on the disposal of surplus assets, inventory and other items for the town.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? All in favor? Thank you very much. Now, the next item, you may want to refer to seven eight two and this engagement plan land use bylaw that is on in front of you as an addition of this paper. Maybe Jeff, if you wouldn't mind talking about this item?
Of course, thank you. From the CCW meeting, council administration was directed to put together a bit of a plan to engage the community in the revisions of the land use bylaw. There is a couple of things here I want some clarification, that I understood council's intentions correctly because when I reviewed my notes, we had a couple of ways we could approach this. So Graham has put this together and I wanted to go through it very quickly here to make sure that this represents council's wishes. Certainly, if it doesn't, we'll amend and be back for the twenty-fourth. So it starts out with, obviously, you're aware that the survey was put out there. The survey would be drafted by ORSC and the administration. We would bring that to council for your feedback on the twenty-fourth of March. And then April first, we would get it out to the public. We would do door-to-door and also have an electronic version option. By May first, a month later, we can then close the surveys, we can compile all the data and we can bring that to council on May twelfth. So you would have that compiled data. Following that, there was some discussion, and this is where I wanna make sure I understood correctly. We had some discussion about either having a steering committee with citizens at large or having a bit of a stakeholder meeting as a bit of a kickoff to the revision. So we would, by invitation, invite key stakeholders in the community to come meet with council in its entirety to discuss specific things to do with the land use bylaw. We would also have our survey feedback by that point in time as well. So on the twelfth of, of May, we would have the survey, survey results and that meeting with council and the key stakeholders of the public. And frankly, if there was others that wanted to come because they had a keen interest, I don't see why we would be okay with that too. So after that, we would present, now this would, there would be quite a gap here because we'd get through the summer and then present a draft bylaw based on the survey and the stakeholder meeting to council. And that would come in, I guess that would be September.
September first.
Yeah. And then we could finalize the draft and have an open house at that point. So just to, once the draft has been established, we can invite the community to come, learn a bit more about it, give feedback on it. All the councillors, you would all be here, old man would be here. And we just have a kind of an open house session for anyone that wanted to come. Following that, we would have the rest of the month of October to amend it, do first reading November tenth. This is a document that requires a statutory public hearing.
You said eleventh there, but it's the tenth, right?
Sorry, that would be November tenth, yes, looking at my eleven dash ten, so not October eleventh, but November tenth. And then December first meeting, we would have that public hearing. And if it was in good form, we could do second to read. Obviously, there's no commitment there to pass any of those readings. But that's how we've mapped it right now to move this forward. So I just wanna ensure that I understood council correctly in your public consultation piece. So we have a stakeholder meeting, a pub, an open house and a public hearing throughout the rest of the year on this process.
And this, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you've got December the eighth and you said December first.
Sorry, the first part of December, yes.
So you meant the first meeting, right?
First, first meeting in December, correct. Thank you.
So it is on the eighth? Yeah, Jeff, my question is related to the requirements for the new South Saskatchewan, you know, compliance. Do we have until, is it twenty seventeen to be compliant with that or is it till twenty sixteen? So we're kind of pressed?
Ryan could answer that a little bit better. So we have been instructed to review our documents and get them compliant with as much of the plan as we know right now. But Ryan said before, it's not all out there yet. There's still pieces. There's still pieces. So I don't know the exact date. And I'm sorry, council, I can find that out.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure. If the requirement was by 2016, you know, we better hope we're getting second or third reading.
To that, my feeling is no. We're under no obligation to pass this by the end of December this year. In fact, in Ryan's presentation, he actually had the final couple of readings in January of 2016. So no, don't feel that that's a pressure at all.
No, I think it's a very good point. But I think you're exactly right, very much of that. That Councilor Banbury first and that Councilor Fred.
Jeff, you've got some pretty tight timelines here. And my concern is, are we able to meet these timelines considering the hiring of a new CAO, too?
Graham and I met on this this afternoon, and we're fairly comfortable with it. We know a couple of the parts are tight. We've talked with Ryan at ORSC today, just again, after he's had a chance to look it over. He recognizes that it'll push him a bit, but that's not a bad thing either. I think, yeah, I think it's reasonable to him.
I think pushing a little bit is not a bad thing. Last time was a municipal development plan. It dragged on so badly that it was over two years and still in the making. And so I think if we can do this one in a bit tighter timeframe, I would prefer that. But, good point. Councilor Fred?
Just have a question. Talking about the drafting of survey. Now, in our last package, actually, there was a draft survey.
Yes.
Is that considered not, I mean, not adequate? Or are we thinking of tweaking that draft survey?
It needed some fixes. I think Ryan even would acknowledge that. It wasn't a finished form. So we will, we'll work with him to get it a little bit closer and bring it back to the next meeting. Yes, we're not going to recreate the wheel. If it's 90% there, that's great.
So that survey is basically good, it just needs a little cleaning up?
Councilor Poye mentioned a couple of concerns, I believe, with maybe one side of a question or a couple of leading questions that weren't worded great. So we're going to scrutinize that fairly closely over this next week and then bring the draft back.
But if we're okay with leading questions, I had a few. We just want to add. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. So we might need, or we may need, we need a motion to adopt the engagement plan land use bylaw. Am I correct?
Yeah, so when I talked to the mayor before, if I didn't understand you correctly, I said, "We don't want a motion. We can do it on the 24th." If this represents how you want to go about it, I would appreciate a motion that approves this plan so that we can start working on those timeframes and those timelines.
Councilor Banbury?
With that in mind, then I would make a motion that we put in place and start the engagement plan for land use bylaw effective today.
Thank you very much. Any more questions, comments? Sign on, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Now, 7B is an interesting issue. As you know, portions of the remuneration of council is tied to the contract with the employees that we just signed up. The contract that we signed has a retroactive clause. The issue that administration brought forward is what is a position of council regarding the possibility of a retroactive remuneration or not. Keeping in mind that it is a very lengthy issue and that really the only amount that we calculated it, more or less with Jeff, because it's such a complicated thing to go back through every single piece of business. It would represent something like $70 per councillor. So the point is this one. Do we want to move forward from 1st of April on?
Yeah, the second quarter.
Second quarter. And not put administration in a position of having to dig through every single piece of paper for $70 a piece?
That would be my preference.
I think...
There's no need to make it retroactive for us.
I think there is a lot of time that would be wasted from the office point of view, digging through every one paper over the past two months. So how do we feel? Are you ready to make a motion to that effect, to move forward?
I'll move that we, for council remuneration, we start from...
1st of April.
For second quarter. And not make it retroactive.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, my question is in the second-to-last paragraph that talks about costs and potential sources of funding. It says there, "Council remuneration is budgeted. However, this account needs to be reviewed prior to setting mill rate as this account was well over budget in 2014." Now, that concerns me considerably for reasons I won't disclose here. But the fact that that could already be over budget before this adjustment, I guess I'm just saying, we really do need to schedule a time to review that policy.
Okay, councillor, you're right. Imagine I make it public, the overspending has been $14,000 this year. But it might also have been caused by the fact that there was a policy that had been put in place last council and might not have been taken in consideration in the budget. And I think, councillor, that part of the issue is that issue.
True.
I think, I'm pretty close to sure.
If I could, councillor, I would agree with the mayor. She came and saw me and said, "You know, did we reflect the increase in policy in 2014's budget?" I don't know that yet. So that could have simply been the case. So I'm hoping that's the case. And then we'll make sure that it's addressed with the increase before we set mill rate for 2015. So so far this year, you're fine for 2015, thankfully, because we're only 10 weeks into it. But everything's fine. I think that might have been the case, though the policy was not reflected in the budget when we set it in the fall of 2013.
Yeah, I think that's where the issue was.
Well, if I may, you know, and not to single anyone out, but I am aware that one member of this council has never submitted not one requisition. So that number is already under budget by one seventh of what it should be.
Yeah, but there are probably...
That's a significant difference.
Okay.
And I guess what I'm worried about is that this council budget is dependent on a lot of, you know, charitable goodwill by the individuals who run for council in this town. And I don't have a problem with that. You know, there are several things I haven't done that I haven't submitted a requisition for. I know we all have done that. I just feel that maybe what we're, we're just not doing our budget the proper, you know, due when we, when we don't know what our real numbers are because we're so dependent on volunteers. And at some future date, you know, other people running for office are going to inherit our donated charity, you know, onto themselves, maybe unfairly.
Okay. What there is, there is a policy. We're all able to read the policy. We're all able to submit our expenses according to policy. If we choose not to, I can't make you do it.
Well, I'm just saying that if we choose to, we're already $14,000 under budget or over budget without choosing to.
No, because...
So I would say our budget really needs to be read.
The budget is reflected upon all the meetings according to policy. It's not according to what we actually do. So you would, you could say that for ourselves as council, if we don't submit a bill, the actual will be less than what's budgeted.
But if I understand correctly, that the actual last year was $14,000 more? Was that the actual? I understand what you're saying about budgeted. But I'm saying if actual is tremendously above budget and then actual is nowhere near what it should be, we're really in trouble. We really need to look at that.
Yeah, but I really think we need to figure out how much the amount would have been part of that $14,000 as not reflecting the policy that was in place. It was an error, it's all what it was. But we have to acknowledge and then fix it.
When we talk about council per diems, there is an education per diem setup for every councillor. And there's also the travel and the regular per diems. Have those been divided accordingly and distributed accordingly to the, to what the, our expense account sheets show? Like if we went to Brownlee Fiat, that's a Brownlee conference, that's an education process. Councilor Barnes and myself went to the education pre-conference. You know, has that been divided off consistently?
The way, it's not specially divided, but applied.
Right.
Okay. So if you have an education account that still has money in it, then it's applied against it for some situation. But if you have no more money in a KID and this council has approved a councillor to go, then it comes out of the general fund.
Well, I'm just, I'm just hoping that our administration staff recognize, you know, where the accounts numbers should be designated.
Well, I think it's a good point. All those things will need to be reviewed and as part of the big picture of the committee, the education, et cetera. Yeah.
I was just going to ask, just direct this question to Jeff. If we came to the office, you could let us know where our account stands on our education?
I have requested that.
You know, because that would be nice to make sure that we're not going over. I mean, like Councilor Banbury said, we've only gone to one education thing each.
Two. Brownlee is a...
Is that an education thing? I just thought that was a regular council.
Can I tell you, you also took an AUMA one day.
That's the one I was thinking of.
That's education.
Yeah, that's the one I was considering. So I wasn't aware that the Brownlee seminar were an educational thing as opposed to a regular council thing that we're all supposed to attend to.
It's an education.
That's what I need to get clarified.
And this is where administration can help us understand all the base of those things.
So, Madam Mayor, the answer in short is if you, we went downstairs right now, no, I don't have it available to tell you because I talked to the mayor earlier about, we'll pull all that out and I'll have Hawken work on that. We would just look through that GL because we would identify councillor Barnes here, councillor Barnes, you know, we would have your names by the expense and it would be a fairly quick tally. I'm not too worried about it. So I'll have Hawken put together a spreadsheet as to where everybody sits right now. I'm hearing, Madam Mayor, if I might, that the need for this committee-type policy, organizational-type meeting with committees may be necessary sooner than later. I'm hearing a lot of this type of discussion tonight. That we may want to put this as one of our higher priorities when we have the discussion in two weeks coming out of the Cuff report. Those are things I'll really try to have all prepared and on the table for when we have that meeting. So we know where everything's at. Your point, councillor Barnes, may be partially accurate that are some of the things that one would consider education going in the general per diem category?
Maybe.
So what we'll do is look at all those accounts collectively and see where it falls out in the end. You know, if we look at all, I think there's three different accounts. If we look at them all collectively, what was budgeted versus actual, we may have a little nicer picture. But I'll look at all that, I'll prepare all that in spreadsheet form for when we have this discussion.
We need to know.
Yeah, good question.
Well, the last thought that I have on this is, you know, and it's great that we're going to do that study, but I wonder if that study will be accurate if there's certain councillors who are out of the goodness of their heart, and good for them, but they're kind of undercutting our proper budget. I was in a meeting where a person said, "Rather than do that to your municipality, it would be better to claim your proper budgeted per diem and then just donate it back to the town if you want to be noble," you know. But then that way, we have an accurate budget rolling forward year to year to year. As opposed to one year, everybody's doing well and they just say, "Don't worry about it. Next year, something changes, we all get a little tight." And we're saying, "I wish I had proper remuneration for this, but we didn't budget for it," you know.
Kind of makes sense. We will have to look at all that. We need more time for this.
Mayor, do we need to designate a special meeting for this?
Not right now, councillor. I think, let's have the review. And from that review, let's decide time-wise what is the closest and nearest time available for CCW meeting.
Because I'm sure that there'll be some other things that will come out of this meeting.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's fine. And I think...
Are you proposing that it should be a separate meeting, like a Saturday morning worship, maybe four-hour review?
It should be, it has to be a public meeting. It has to be a public meeting. It's public funds that we are receiving. It has to be a public meeting.
Absolutely.
So my intent, if I can do this in time, I hope I can, is I'd like to put together the recommendations that came from Cuff. I'd like to put an inventory of what exists currently, where we feel that the current bylaw and policy may be inferior and we can amend, and where we need to add new or rescind old. Then we can start to prioritize some of these other things, like committee assignments, remuneration, and look at those. My hope would be, we just kind of pick them off systematically over the course of our CCW, or if they're called something different, but over the course of those committee meetings going forward. I'd love to just be able to pick off a couple at a time based on the council priority.
And I really think it's also looking at priority or strategic planning does not really have any governance part into these priority. And we might have to add that to it to make it consistent with what we're going to do. Might have to be a needed item. Okay. All right. Policy S-50-2, standby policy.
Did we need to vote on that?
No. We had a motion, we had a motion, yes. We had a motion on the table.
That's right.
So all in favor? Thank you so much. Councillor Barfus, you show up for a young man that's not feeling too good. Okay, we wish you all the best.
Bring up the controversial ones.
All right. Policy S-50-2, standby policy. Jeff is going to explain that for us. An emotion will have to be taken after we have our in-camera on the contract, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, you have this, and those of you who are on the negotiation committee will recall that one of the requests of the association was that standby was taken out of the contract and placed under policy for the whole of council's governance. So in respect of that request from the association, you have the standby policy in front of you. The mayor is correct. I would appreciate that this policy came in concert with the poli... Sorry. I would appreciate that the motion on this policy came in concert with a motion on the association contract after our in-camera session. Because, not that I think anyone, it's not going to affect anything. I would just want these things to move in tandem so we never have a time when we debate one thing and leave it while we pass another, and now all of a sudden I don't have anything governing standby. So what you've seen is simply verbatim out of the contract. The only thing that changed is, and this was one that we thought about leaving in the contract on the Sunday chores, as you know, we do, we... Each of our water, wastewater certified individuals take a turn doing recreation facility checks and the mandatory Sunday chores at the water wastewater. So we do compensate them for that. That was attached to the negotiations. So the rate you see here is the new rate if council approves the association agreement. But standby pay is not attached to the negotiation. So it is what it was in the previous contract. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, I would ask that council stays a motion until a little bit later.
Yeah.
And let's deal with it later.
Yeah. All right. Any issues regarding this? No? Thank you very much. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, 7D, Community Theater. I received a phone call from Mr. Estor to seek support from the town for a grant, a CIP grant, community initiative programs that would help them to upgrade their lighting and sound system. So it is not a requirement for money on our part. It is just a letter of support to say, yes, we indeed support the initiative.
It's a, it's a great thing because it's upgrading this billing.
Exactly right.
It's to our advantage.
So, councillor?
Yeah, let me just get on with it. I'll make the motion that we send a letter of support for the, for the Community Theater CIP grant.
Okay. Thank you. Question?
Just a question, maybe for administration. You're familiar with the processes. And by the way, I'm all in favor of supporting this. But, you know, as we've gone, you know, month after month, you know, giving letters of support here, letters of support there, grant applications are submitted. Do they take note? as to what's directed in Cardston's direction? You know, essentially, the funds that are allotted for various things that we're writing letters of support for? And then do they cap it? Do they say, "Oh, man, we've sent a ton of money to Cardston, and then later we have a municipal grant application, and we get denied because, oh, you know, our community theater already got our allotment."
Makes sense, but it works a little bit differently.
Does the right hand know what the left hand is doing?
Different departments.
Yeah, in short, no, in long, probably. So the short answer is, no, these are not per capita-based grants, they're competitive grants based on the merits of the application. The longer answer is, if you were to just completely bombard the department with applications out of your community, is it gonna hit the radar and we're going to probably allocate it? Probably. And that's why it's important that these come for council approval. And actually, had I had appropriate time to do the backgrounder on this, but didn't, I would, in that backgrounder, suggest to council if there was other competing grants for other community priorities. Because it may be short-sighted for the council, and here's a perfect example. The Community Foundation of Lethbridge is one that, if they've given one to another group in the community and then someone else applies, only one of them's going to get it, most likely. And so they usually look to the council to say, "Council, what's the priority of your community?" Now SIP is going to do that somewhat the same. I am not aware of a competing priority for the SIP grant in this term, so I would be relatively comfortable that it's not going to interfere with other applications. At least I'm not aware of any that have come to council for your endorsement. Having said that, we do have groups that are autonomous enough that can apply on their own, they wouldn't need council's endorsement. In this case, especially what Community Theater will find, because it's in our building that we own, and they need it anyway. So I don't see any competing priorities. I think it's a good use of the SIP grant. But yes, if we were to overwhelm them in one grant, I think that would probably catch their attention a little bit, and they would use some discretion there. These are funds that are generally quite oversubscribed, so many don't make the cut. And we've seen, out of this Alberta Lottery Fund grant, we've seen our last two, we've received them, but they've been cut back dramatically, significantly from what we applied for, and awesome that we still got them, very grateful for that. But it was a lesser amount so they could accommodate more applicants. And I suggest that theater may find that as well.
Okay. And thank you for, at that point, we kinda looked at it also from that perspective, and I appreciate you having that foresight. Thank you, Counselor.
We have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion on the table, we need to vote on it. All in favor? Thank you. I know they were pressed for time, unfortunately, so I brought it forward. You have the financial report right now on the front of you. This is a budget that will give you a comparison between the budget that we approved and the first months of this spending and revenue for that month. If you see, if you see in the expenses, there are some items that are in brackets, I would suggest that there was a revenue rather than an expense. Well, it's really a credit note, you could call it. It's a little bit of a book, kinda book. Jeff, if you want to explain that.
Sure, if I could speak to that quickly. Essentially what happens, as you might recall, in January, we received bills for the month before. They're booked into the system as payables because we got them in January. But then they have to be journal entryed out of that account because they were actually expenses that happened in 2014. And so that will work out. But when you look at a January report, what you see is journal entries to move expenses out of GLs because they're sitting in payables in the current year.
And that can stay there. Right, and would like to thank administration and Hocken for this report. It's very good to see the comparison this way. Yes, Counselor Bantry?
I make a motion to accept the financial statement.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Thank you.
If I might, I just wanted to comment after, now. I attended the First Choice AGM on behalf of Counselor Bantry, who wasn't able to attend that meeting. And I was able to make a short thank you speech to the First Choice Credit Union for their support in the community and for the services that, financial services that they've given to the town over the past 20 years. And it went very well, it was a very good meeting there, and a lot of people attended. And I met a lot of people there that I hadn't seen for a long time. And it was good, well-received, and so I was glad that I was able to do that on behalf of the council.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that you were doing that. Thanks. Okay, 9A, Bylaw Animal Control Report. That came from the last meeting, as you remember. We wanted to have a little bit more understanding of what was going on in the report on the others. And Jeff will speak to it, he has a fairly lengthy report from Lloyd. And will share that with us at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lloyd had his February report all done up for me when I got back from LGAA, so I didn't have a chance to get the other category tweaked for this meeting. So he gave me a breakdown, and going forward, we will put below the report what all the others consisted of. So there's no problem. So just for your information, in January, there was quite a few on that other category, as you recall. So there was seven found properties, so normally, in fact, I saw the reports, all seven of them were bikes, that somebody woke up in the morning and there was a straying bike in their backyard, so they fall in luck. And so seven of those were bikes, there were six issues with snow removal, three basketball hoop complaints, two suspicious activities, repairing some caution lights and other signage, and removal of a signpost. That was all the others in January, so nothing startling, just some day-to-day miscellaneous. February, we have, there was about 15 others. Well, there's seven that were total reports. There was two, we had a couple of different instances in February where people were doing construction or deconstruction, and a lot of the debris from that was blowing into other property owners. So that was a number of the others in February, as well as two more bikes found, by the way. Livestock at large, raccoon problem, grass fire, and other sign damage. So that's what made up the others in February.
Yes, Counselor Bantry?
Mayor Cronin, and this is to Jeff also. We had a power failure in February. And it was due to garbage coming out of one of our industrial sites. Was that charged back to that industrial site?
I can't say because it was in Fortis territory. It wasn't our issue. It was just outside of the boundaries in Fortis.
But did our men take care of it?
No, Fortis responded to it. They were there 15, 20 minutes or so.
I would suggest, and it's only a suggestion, that if we have a situation like that arise, and it is because of, you know, not keeping their negligence on their part, that that needs to be charged back to that situation.
Jeff, if I might, Madam Mayor, in those cases, just for council's information, if we get any call-outs, whether they're electrical, water, sewer, and we find what we have, I have a call-out log that the guys fill out so I can review it, they will say on there whether it should be charged back or not. So if they find it's something where they could've waited till the next day, they'll usually ask them, "Look, is there any reason this can't wait? Or is there something going on?" If it's something that could've waited, or it was a result of an error or negligence or them doing something, we do charge back our call-outs.
Thank you.
But this one was in Fortis, even though it was sort of in the town, it tangled up in it. That was a nasty wind that night, or that was something. And that was a Fortis issue. Thank you.
Good. Counselor Barnes?
Question regarding the bylaws and the animals and stuff. I'm sure each of you, every now and then, have a private citizen come to talk to you about these situations, and I've had quite a few lately. And so I just wanna know, the proper protocol is for me listening to concerned citizens, as I've had several regarding unkept properties. People are coming to me, and I listen to them, but I tell them that perhaps you should be coming directly to you regarding these situations, or to Lloyd, or to, if they really wanna make a valid complaint, it should be written and presented to either Lloyd or to you here at the town. Now, is that the right way to go? Because I can't give them an answer. I can listen to them, and I can empathize with them, but I can't make a judgment. And sometimes I feel that they want me to make the judgment, and I can't do that.
Counselor Barnes, all the above.
All the above.
It's correct.
Except for me making a judgment.
I really, I really think you, as a counselor, can go afterwards and make sure that it has been reported, and if so, try to understand what the follow-up will be.
So for council's information, if anyone phones into anyone at the office, we generate what's called a citizen improvement form, which maybe we need to rethink, because we're not trying to improve the citizen, we're trying to improve for the citizen.
Satisfaction.
Now that I said it out loud, it sounds a little funny. But so we log that, and then Lloyd, those are all assigned to Lloyd, and then he follows up with them, and then he does a report on, and I get those at the end of every month to review. So any improvement form that comes in, it's logged electronically. Lloyd takes it, creates a file number, follows up, keeps it open until it's dealt with, and then reports those to me at the end of every month. So they don't have to necessarily catch myself or even Lloyd. If they call into the town office, if they wanna write something, even better. That's great, because then we have that with a lot of information. But if not, they simply need to call anyone in the office, we'll log the complaint, Lloyd will contact them and follow up and open a file. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are always good points, because we all, at one point or another, are asked to really be the upper fixer.
Fixer-upper.
The fixer-upper, one or the other. But it's French version, you're right. Thank you. Anyway, under 10, it's good that we can laugh sometimes at all.
Thank you.
Under 10, questions. Cuff, the report has been downloaded on your drive. If you are wishing to obtain a paper copy, you may request that from administration, they will give you a copy. They have two extra one at this point. And this report is now the final draft. We, with Jeff, received the original draft that was 44 pages. This one is 77 pages. But the reason for the difference in information is because Jeff and I both reviewed the document, and then we spoke and studied all points of agreement, disagreement with the report, and felt that some point needed more clarity and more elaboration. So we sent a note to Mr. Cuff, well, I would say, Jeff compiled all common points. And Mr. Cuff was impressed with Orenzi's review of his note.
Of his review?
But appreciated it, we took the time and took it so seriously, and we did. The reason is because this document is going to help us improve governance, which he, in his opinion, just to be good, in fact, commanded us for the way we run business in this town. So we're going to now go to a level of excellence. And his recommendation was that we write the minister or municipal affair and give them a happy note story rather than he always sending a sad note story. So it was an interesting comment, obviously. So we will do so. Counselor Pivoy?
Yeah, first question, when we went back for additional clarification, was there additional charge for Cuff?
No.
No, so that was all part of his assessment. And then, just to help me understand, and again, I know it's public, we spent how much total on the cuff review?
The review total was $37,000. And a few other hundreds, maybe, that I don't remember.
Thirty-five, eight, eighty-four.
Oh, okay, I was a little heavy.
And then just to hear from, and I'm sure this is the case, but just to hear from administration, maybe just a question. Just in your assessment of going through the results, you believe we've got our money's worth?
Absolutely.
I mean, I would say so, but I...
May I, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Administration's point here. So I had a very interesting discussion with Mr. Cuff yesterday. He called and he asked if I'd got his bill. And I said, "Yeah, yeah, I did." And he said, "So any initial thoughts?" I said, "Well, I had initial thoughts, but that's beside the point." My point is this, counsel, that we knew what the costs were going in and we agreed to them. Now, whether we got a 200-page report of 100 things we were doing poorly, or whether we got what was ended up being about a 30-page with appendices, about a number of things we're doing well, I'll take the shorter report for the same dollar. There's some great recommendations in here that are going to improve our governance substantially. And I want to give a little bit of context to the review. George asked if the mayor and I would just review his recommendations in case he misunderstood some things, because he was here for, you know, just a couple of days. So we did that and found a couple of items that we felt either, well, some things we actually had policy where he had suggested that we were deficient in policy, so we were able to send him some support information. George was expensive, he is expensive, and he can be because he's in demand. And so I think it was an expensive process, but at the end of the day, I am happy with the process, and I think there's some very good things there that will move the town forward for many councils to come, that the impact of the study will go far beyond this council in your next two and a half years. So it's going, we can amortize that expense over a number of years, if you want me to put it in those kind of terms. And again, I can rationalize it anyways, but we can advertise that expense over many councils to make good sense. And I'm much happier to take a small report commending us on many things than a Peace River-esque report that's 240 pages, that's quite condemning. And George will tell you, he doesn't do a lot of the former, he does a lot of the latter. And he was very positive, very complimentary on your governance as a council, the things you've done, the things that I have to say that Marion put into place for her last, you know, five or six years, and put a number of those pieces in place. And he was very happy with the governance model, but left us with some really good things to do as well, that are ambitious and they're gonna take a lot of our time and effort. But again, you're setting the table for good things going forward a long way.
Yeah, and really to go along with that comment. To me, I view it as living your legacy. And that might be all I see.
Mayor, if I may, I'd really like to read the summary comments that Mr. Cuff put in here, so that the public can know a little bit about...
I think these need to be presented to the public.
Yeah, they need to know what went on here. And I think the summary comments that he's got on here on page 19, I think is very good. I was very pleased when I read this. And I thought it wouldn't hurt if we read this so that the citizens could know. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read it.
Go ahead.
Okay. So Mr. Cuff, after doing the review, sent to us, and he said, "We were impressed by what we found in the town of Cardston. The council appeared to be very willing to learn about local government and to apply any solutions which would assist them in their governance responsibilities. We also thought that the staff, who we were privileged to meet again, had willing hearts relative to our advice and how to be better in helping council govern and in managing their community. It is our view that both council and management should continue to seek ways by which they can improve their service to the community. This mindset and attitude will prove helpful in creating the path forward. We lose ground when we stand pat. Progress is only achieved by those who see problems as opportunities, roadblocks as challenges and frustrations as temporary setbacks." And I feel that this council and the rapport that we have with the administration and the staff, I think, has been exemplary. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Cuff came here and that did this review for us in this audit, that we can continue to be a better council and be more responsible and responsive to... and be more responsible and responsive to the community at large. So, I really appreciate that we did this. And I think going forward, we just continue to work to do better things so that we can, like you say, Mayor, leave a legacy of excellence. That's part of our plan for the future and we want to continue to do that. And I think that I want to counsel us not to give big heads because we did get a good performance review, but we need to continue to look at these opportunities. And there were roadblocks, the challenges, and those frustrations as temporary setbacks and move forward and continue to do well. So, that's just what I felt that was necessary, that our people know that we are trying to do the best for them and represent them well.
Thank you very much, council. It is true that if you have good governance, you can do whatever you want and you will do it well. And it will impact on the budget that we run. It will impact on the services, the programming, on the morale of the organization. The whole of good governance impacts everywhere. So, it always have been one of my pet peeves and I'm glad that we're moving forward together in that direction.
I'd also like to suggest this, and it's been sort of in my craw since it was mentioned, that this was a governance audit, just as it's spoken here. This is not a review. A review is a very, very lengthy process. This is a mini-audit and it was not because of our former CAO leaving or anything else. It's an audit for the governance and we need to refer to it as an audit because they went through the employees and our bylaws and policies and things like that. And he did an excellent job.
Yeah, and there are a lot of important points regarding our organizational structure, which we will have to deal with in the future because this is where the greatest impact will have on the organization. And that is something that moving forward, we will need to pay quite a bit of attention to.
Mayor, I'd also like to say that I'm impressed that this council took the initiative and the mayor to have this done. Former councils have always felt that they have somebody come in and do an audit or a review, that they're witch hunting. What's the skeletons in the closet? That is not the purpose for one of these. The purpose for one of these is efficiency and how we operate better as a community, serving our community. And so, I'm impressed that we had Mr. Cuff come down. He is the guru, as far as I'm concerned, of municipalities. You know, he knows what it's all about. And so, I thank this council for having this done.
Thank you.
Just another short comment. I think we need to acknowledge that we have great staff, we have great administration, and we have great municipal workers who do the work in this town. And I'm impressed. I've been impressed for the years that I've lived here, the way that the maintenance staff keep our community in the condition that they do. I hear people from other communities that come and they say, "We are the envy of a lot of other communities." You know, we get people who complain about, you know, the snow removal may not be as quick as they want it or something like that. And those are, those are details that, you know, we have to look at. But I have people that say, "If you think you have problems with snow removal, you move to Calgary, you move to Edmonton, you want to see problems." Those are the communities that have problems. We have, we have a very, very good system here. And I really want to recommend and thank our municipal staff and workers and our administration. I think they're doing a great job. They make us look good. That's really what I feel. So, I appreciate all that they do for us.
So long you keep the money rolling in your budget, that's happy. Okay. All right. Councillor Pivoy?
Oh, I don't know, I wasn't-- Do you know whether to say it or not?
Okay. Let's go to Illinois Correspondents.
Yeah.
Federation of Canadian Municipalities is again inviting us to their meeting. As you know, we are a little late for this one. As part of the review, Councillor Barnes said that he could go there and represent our town, staying at his daughter's place. So, if it is the wish of council to do so, to have one person go, that is up to this council. At this point, it's a little late, but we probably don't even know how much it costs to register. I don't even know that.
Madam Mayor, I think our time is, like you said, is, it's late, it's getting on. Maybe this is something that we should look at for next year because our AUMA is coming up.
Next year is in Vancouver, I think. So, it's cheaper to go this year than next year?
Madam Mayor, one can still register.
Okay.
I'm pulling a number here. I want to say it's nine hundred dollars.
For the five days?
That's for the full conference. And one thing that came up this week, if Councillor Barnes wants to go, Tyler is also going and taking the town car.
Okay.
So, that could be something that could help as well. He's going up to that with his fellow interns. Couldn't find a hotel to save his life, by the way, so he's bunking with somebody.
Or a seastream?
He's finding a friend that has an apartment and going to stay there.
Yeah, I mean, this is--
So--
Okay. So, Councillor Barnes, do you want to go?
Sure. Well, I'd love to go and I think it's, as Mr. Cuff said, it's something that he feels is very important that we should attend. And I know if I go and stay at my daughter's, it's certainly going to save us quite a bit of money. I don't know what a motel cost or a hotel cost, but I'm sure it's going to save us seven, eight hundred dollars.
All right. And if you ride with, if you ride with Tyler, it would really be a great way to kind of save some of the traveling.
My big concern is when, you know, it becomes only the large municipalities who end up sending representatives to this. So, that's probably not a direction we're going to be happy with. So, I really appreciate that Councillor Barnes is willing to go.
I do have a concern about driving up there with the logistics of us getting-- my daughter lives up in the far west corner.
I see what you're saying.
And Tyler's going to be over here with his friends, so that's going to be difficult. I can't be taking a bus back and forth.
We'll work through that.
Or taxi or whatever.
Okay. Well, you can work with the administration on this one. Okay. Essentially, what we need to do is decide if we need--
One concern I have is it's great that you're going to stay at your daughter's, but that doesn't give us an actual indication as to what it costs to attend this conference.
Yeah, but considering that we did not plan that in our budget, let's try to figure this year how to cut the corners.
Then in future years, you're going to say, "Well, who has relatives in Vancouver?"
No.
But that isn't giving you an accurate indication.
The only reason we're doing it this year is because the rooms are all booked up. Not even a children's. There was just no place to stay.
You would be totally outside of--
And so, I just suggested that, hey, if one of us go, I could stay. But I don't, she, I even, she even said the mayor can stay there as well at her place if she wanted to attend as well. So, there's room there, but I don't have a problem with that.
But that doesn't give you an accurate indication of what it costs to run a council.
Okay.
But every time we do that--
I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's not accurate.
Yeah.
So, we can say, "Well, if everything we do, we do it at somebody's house, we can save a lot of money."
There was Councillor Pivoy's--
Councillor, there is a validity in what he's saying. I think there is actual cost in the next budget that we will have to look at when we look at all those conferences. And then, if we're able to save money, fine. If we don't, that will be a decision of council.
I mean, just a comment. Mr. Cuff recommended that, at least if I recall, two people should be attending that conference each year from council, right? And if we're going to follow his recommendations, we'd better start somewhere.
Well, to tell you the truth--
And this is, this is a way we can save a little bit and--
That is, that is one aspect that was not put in the report because Jeff and I had one concern that the recommendation is fine, but we're a small town.
Yeah.
We're a small town with limited dollar amount. And with a small town that does not show the growth that even a Raymond has. So, when you start to talk fourteen thousand dollars, you're talking five new houses being built in this town. That has to be put in perspective. If we lose the perspective, we have a total disconnect with the--
Yeah, that's true.
--with the taxpayer. We cannot lose that perspective.
Yeah, you're right.
And that's up to us to toe that line.
Yeah.
I think, I think Mr. Cuff is doing well by suggesting that we need to send people to these FCM conferences. But as a council, we can determine whether that is good or bad for our community--
Yeah.
--and whether it's worthwhile. Now, a lot of his recommendations, we need to review, which are beneficial to our community.
Yeah.
And whether we go to an FCM meeting or we go to AUMA, I think that's up to this council to decide whether it is beneficial to our community.
What we need, what is sure, councillor, if you go, you need to come back with a report and with as much of the material we gather so that we all could be privy to other reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, inasmuch as that we've never sent someone to the FCM and it is in Edmonton and I think this is an opportunity to--
Yeah, it is.
--to do that. If we need a motion, I will--
Yeah, we need a motion.
I will move that we send Councillor Barnes to the FCM to represent our council.
Thank you. Orenzi? Thank you. All right. That one is so. Alberta Recycling, just to make you know, we got the grant to be able to redo the front of the civic center with new eco green kind of covering. Alberta International Intergovernment Relations, just for your information. It's an interesting point that might have some legality in the future. We don't know, we're not sure. It's regarding procurement. Alberta Municipal Affairs, two letters from Alberta Municipal Affairs. Any question regarding those?
Well, I'd just like to back up to this recycling one.
Okay.
We didn't get a chance. It went by me so fast.
Oh, I thought you may have read it.
No, I did read it. I just wanted to know, have we got a timeline when we're going to start to take care of this, to do the stairs?
Before the springtime?
Yeah, I just wanted to know that.
Yeah, sorry, councillor. I don't know exactly when the grant has been correlated with the contractor, so I simply don't know.
Do we have the money yet?
Yes, I believe we do have this one, yeah. And I apologize, that came back a while ago and then in the transition, I found it in the correspondence file of Marion's folder. So, yes, I believe we have that one already.
Okay. Yeah, because I've been thinking about this for some time, wondering what was going to happen. You know, and I hadn't seen anything. So, when I saw it, I'm glad because we hadn't talked about it quite a bit. And I just wondered, you know, if it had been put on the back burner if we were going to do it.
We were, if I might, Madam Mayor, we thought we were going to get approval for this last fall and it didn't come, so we just thought it was dead. And then, at the end of the year, we caught-- we assumed the ship had sailed and it wasn't coming, so we were pleased to see this at the end of the year.
That's terrific.
One of the Alberta Municipal Affairs, as you could see, has to do with four hundred million dollars that were announced on the news regarding the MSI.
Yeah.
It's a one-time funding of four hundred million dollars to be applied to this present budget, not next year, but it is also transferable to next year for project. We receive two hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred forty dollars from that four hundred million dollars. This is a amount of money that is distributed according to population--
We're getting that now?
Yeah.
For this year?
To education tax requirement and two kilometers of roads. It's for infrastructure. But infrastructure can include the swimming pool, can include road, can include the mitigation on a creek. All that will have yet to be reviewed and administration will put forward a plan and suggest the use of the money according to the budget that we have presently.
No, I don't mean to put administration on the spot, but is there any way to just kind of ballpark how close that was to our projected budget total for that? Or did we not plan for any?
No. This is--
Is this all additional?
Yes, it's additional, it's new funding.
If I might, Madam Mayor, we received our full allocation of MSI capital for the fiscal twenty fourteen, fifteen because it's a bit of a pain that the province's fiscal is different than municipality's fiscal. But we received our full allocation of MSI. This was new money that was announced on Friday. I was at the meeting--
Over and above the MSI.
So, we receive approximately, I want to say, six hundred and change a year, something like that. This is an additional two fifty-five--
For this year only?
Two hundred fifty-five thousand.
Two hundred fifty-five thousand, correct.
This still doesn't get us to the level where we were three years ago with MSI.
We had lost one third of the money.
And it needs to be clear, this is not additional funding on an ongoing basis for MSI capital. This is one time, which is very interesting timing. We can have that whole debate another time.
You're referring something about elections or--
Well, no. I'm not. It's just, we had a whole half-hour discussion--
I'll see you when we make-- Epoletico.
And then an announcement of this. So, very interesting timing, to say the least.
Councillor Benby?
What does this give us for roads, two kilometers?
No, what it is, is the formula is based on your kilometer-- MSI formula is based on three criteria. Per capita, education assessment, and kilometers of roads. The kilometers of roads is there to benefit the MDs. Right, that's why they weigh heavily into the kilometers of roads formula. So, it's not specific for roads.
Okay.
MSI capital is one of those grants that is very much discretionary to the council and your priority. It is a capital required grant, don't get me wrong, but it is your discretion. I've met with Hawken. We are going to review the capital funding sheet that you were given when we passed budget. And when we come for mill rate, what we're going to look at is, because MSI is relatively discretionary, if we have any tax-funded projects that we can use MSI for, then we'll start to change some funding to try and relieve cash that is obviously completely discretionary and that we can use for other purposes. The other thing, to be frank, and I want to have all the confidence in the world, but I would like to also keep that two hundred and fifty in our pocket for a bit until we hear on March twenty-sixth what the provincial budget looks like.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, I'm not spending it just yet.
Exactly. And I think it's very wise because the budget will be lean and mean. We will have the funding for next year, apparently, but--
For two sixteen.
Yeah, after that, we do not know.
So, my last and follow-up question, you know, with all these new things that seem to be creeping up onto your plate, I just wanted maybe another assessment on how you're doing. Do you feel like you have enough support right now? Because I know we're understaffed. And are we going to be able to hold on?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, this morning at certain on, I said, "Jeff, you look a little overwhelmed."
I didn't know I would take that, but you know, we're concerned.
I have a question to Jeff.
I'm just going to get back to the podium. This has been great exercise.
Since somebody mentioned in here remediation.
Yes.
I've been thinking a lot about the creek remediation. Where are we? Have we heard anything more on our application for the funding for that remediation yet?
Here's what I know.
It's not good.
Yeah, I don't have a great story to tell you. So here's three, here's no bad news, and then I'll try and find the good news.
Okay.
The first bad news is two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars will do almost nothing of consequence on me, in and of itself. Number two is the Community Resilience Grant that we applied for. We were rejected, but asked to reapply by the end of the month, which Tyler's working on. It is oversubscribed three to one. So there's bad news number two. Bad news number three is we were approved under the Disaster Recovery Program for twenty-four, twenty-fourteen flood damage dollars. They still have eighteen-hundred applications of the twenty-thirteen to process before they will be processing twenty-fourteens. So this presents some problems, and it's something I don't have an answer for you, but I need to get you an answer, is. And, and I, I'm not actually personally thankful for this, but in a town sense, I am. We have very low snowpack in the mountains, and we have a pretty good chance of coming out of this June without a flood. Now, overall, it's not good news, because we need the moisture. But at the end of the day, we can't afford a repeat of last June, again, on the infrastructure that's already compromised. We may dodge that bullet this year simply because we have the lack of snow, and we're already having an incredibly warm March, and the rivers are flowing. So I, I'm, I just don't, I would love to say that legitimately, we can get some key work done. I don't know if we can. And so we may just have to cross our fingers a little bit and hope that we get through the spring. Now, that's a terrible plan, I recognize that. Crossing your fingers is not Plan A.
Well, maybe we should cross our legs, too.
So we will try, and we have Albert Tego from Associated working on preliminary engineering of what we've called the hotspots on the creek. There's about thirteen of them, in priority. They're not all the same priority, don't get me wrong. But overall, there's about thirteen. We've asked him to look at the high-priority spots and engineer some mitigation. We may have to go ahead with some of that, irrespective of Disaster Recovery Program funding, simply to maintain critical infrastructure. Now, for the public watching, the main street's not washing out, the Third Avenue Bridge is-- I'm not talking about those critical pieces, or we'd really be scrambling to get something done. I'm talking the bridge at the golf course. As far as cost to fix it, if it failed, would hold the highest cost. Remediation in that area should be okay. We have a couple of lines starting to expose in other areas, irrigation or water lines, where it's eroded, and they're, they're going to expose if that erosion continues at that rate. So I want it to be clear, I'm not worried about losing a main street or Third Avenue Bridge, or, or First Avenue Bridge. Those are fine. It's predominantly at that golf course area that we've got to do some work. And at the campground, we're starting to erode to the east quite a bit, across from Counsel Creek's home there. So we will try and put in place by May, if we have to do some Band-Aid mitigation out of pocket, we'll present that to council, because it will be necessary to do to protect a greater cost if the infrastructure fails. But I, I'm sorry, I don't have good news on all three of those points. We will reapply for the resilience program, even though it's terribly oversubscribed. We still intend to reapply, because it's--
It is definitely like the law, though. You've got to be in it to win it, right?
Yeah, that's right. So we're going to put the application in. And then we have someone assigned from D R P to our twenty-fourteen case. I will plead the case again for some expediency on adjudicating that. We are waiting for an engineer from Disaster Recovery to come down and meet with us. And that will start things rolling, even though, again, they're still processing twenty-thirteen. So it's definitely top of mind, Counsel.
Okay, another question in regards to that. If we go ahead and do some remedial, necessary remedial work, is that going to, uh--
Can we recoup?
Can we recoup that money?
No.
Or is that something that's out of pocket, and, and they're going to tell us, sorry, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't count towards the remediation funding?
You can't apply after the fact, right?
But it does, I mean--
Maybe. My answer's maybe. Counsel Banry is, is suggesting that you can't apply for what you spent prior, but the catch is there, you can't, you can't get reimbursed for things you spent prior to approval. We've been approved.
Yeah.
But we don't know for how much.
That's--
So the risk is if I went and spent a million dollars on the remediation, and we were approved for three-hundred thousand, then we're out the seven, for sure.
Right.
So any remediation is going to be pragmatic and careful and minimalist to protect infrastructure.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that will conclude our regular council meeting. We will have to have a motion to maybe recess.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we recess for five minutes before we go in camera.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, and thank you to the media.
Drop.
Very nice.